The Committee of the Hole is called back to order. My colleagues, we are now, will begin the second round of questions. And we will begin with Senator Chris Duñez and proceed to his left, which is my right. And then as, as the other colleagues show up, hopefully they show up before we get to them. Because once we reach that individual and they're not here, we will continue on. And it's no comeback to them. We just keep moving. And I hope everybody shows up. And we do have OBs, we should be here in a few seconds or minutes. And we have Shane from DOE will be here, but Mr. Ed Byrne is here. And we'll begin with you, Senator Chris Duñez. Sir.
Mr. Chair, and thank you for Mr. Byrne and the rest who will be coming in once again for showing up to the Committee of the Hole. Mr. Byrne, I, I want to, after last night and the, a number of questions surrounding the different categories of pay and the different back and forth, I want to concentrate on revenues. I do agree with Senator Brown that I believe the issue of speculation, as far as I'm concerned, with nothing set in stone in terms of a study of future revenues and, and the anticipation under the way that you kind of explained it with Section 30 and the like, I'm, I'm not comfortable with speculation. So I'm just, but I'm going to go through what our history is. So I guess now that OB is here, I, I'm glad because this is question is kind of simultaneous for the two of you. Did we, in fiscal year, in the fiscal 2023 budget, did we appropriate just about every dollar in the unaudited surplus funds from 2022?
Senator, we, we appropriated 21 million.
Good morning, Steve, or Captain Steve. I, I seem to remember that throughout the entirety of the budget, we appropriated pretty much every amount of the, of the anticipated unaudited surplus for fiscal year 2022.
Good afternoon, Senator. If you're referring to the FY23 budget, I don't believe we appropriated any money in the FY23 budget from the FY22 excess. What we appropriated in the FY23 budget is revenues we anticipate to collect in FY23.
But there were several amendments that were made in the miscellaneous provisions for the hospital, 5 million for specialists. I, I definitely remember we made commitments for that revenue.
Senator, I'm going to have to go back and look, because you know, to my recollection, I don't think we appropriated any excess money of FY22. You might be right, right out the bat. I don't think I, we did that in FY, because normally in the FY23 budget, we only account for revenues we anticipate to collect in the fiscal year. Anything above that would be an addition too, but we don't consider that as part of the FY23 appropriations in terms of revenues collected for that year.
Yeah, I'll get the reconciliation, but I know we did. My-
Senator, if I, if I could expand on that, as Mr. Guerrero says, we actually have a balanced budget. So the revenues that are contemplated are all appropriated. Included in the budget, right, was some sums that were appropriated from the 2% set aside, and that amounted to 13.5 million. And then there was a separate amendment to appropriate 21 million from the audited fiscal 22 general fund surplus balance. And I think that's what you're referring to.
Right. So what I'm going to say is, is that I know, because when the public auditor, B.J. Cruz, was here, he made it clear that any appropriations that we've made prior are obligations of the government of Guam. I'll move on. At this point, when we look at the CRER with the 45 million revenues, we're going, you're going to concur that, of course, we anticipate the bill being signed into law, so 21 million for DOE, correct?
Roughly, yes.
Last night, you said there's $6 million obligation for the merit bonuses, correct?
There's, that's what the total of the merit bonus is will cost when paid.
Mr. Byrne, you've put it on the record that you believe the general fund supports special fund revenue in case any shortfalls. Special fund looks to be 9 million in deficit. Would you concur?
To be precise, Senator, there is a shortfall in, in general fund revenues of 9 million. That's not to say there's a deficit, because there will have been some reduction in expenditures.
I'm just going to take it from what's on the books right now. So I'm going to add 9 million to that. Mr. Byrne, there was a discussion last night that this pay raise does not include the set aside for benefits, which is usually 20% of gross pay. Would you be in concurrence?
And so the, the retirement fund contribution is about 28%, and there's 1.45% for Medicare.
So if I base that on 20 million, that's probably going to be about $6 million.
Yes, sir.
I'm afraid we've already hit the 45 million surplus.
It's the opinion of BBMR that the 6 million that is, that you referred to, that is the merit bonus, and the benefit part of the, of the, the figures that we're talking about now for, for the 22% GPP increase can be covered by current, current agency budgets. So they have, and those funds have already been appropriated to the agencies.
So what I'm trying to establish, Mr. Byrne, is a cost basis here. So if you're saying that they're going to use their lapses, probably because they're not hiring, or for whatever reason, or there could be a reserve that's been put on their budget, I'm, I'm still going to call it a cost for my mathematics.
Yes, it's still a cost, but it, it's not to be set aside, set against the 45 million.
So even if I took out the nine and the six, we'd be, would have a balance possibly for this of about $10 million?
I'm not following your, your calculations there. The, the two bills, the two bills that have been discussed in this week come together about 41 million.
Yeah, that means that you're not accepting the fact of the 9 million. I'll do my calculations, Mr. Byrne, but I can, and I'll talk about that during my time for the third round. Mr. Byrne, are you aware of charts that have been produced by the Guam Chamber of Commerce that shows that all of the presentations made on the private sector versus the government sector in terms of wages and benefits and compensation are completely out of kilter for the representations that have been made?
Could you please guide me to what you're looking at?
Can we take a one-minute recess? I'd like to distribute these forms.
We're in recess. The Committee of the Hole is back from recess. Senator Duñez, you are still recognized.
So just for the basis of the discussion that we've been having, if you look at both of these studies, if the GAWAM 22% increase goes into effect in terms of hourly wage, and this is a comparison, the darker shade is June of 2022, the lighter shade is June of 2019. The hourly rage, average wage for government of Guam would be 4318. And the lowest, I'm not going to go through every sector, the lowest would be hotels and other lodging at nine, at $11.22 an hour. That's a gulf in terms of what the wages earn by sector.
Senator, if, if somebody is paid $35.39 an hour, that's around about $75,000 a year. The numbers that we gave you yesterday don't support everybody getting $75,000 a year. So I'm, I'm really unclear where these numbers come from. And furthermore, if that were the case, I'm sure we, Shane would have a line outside of his office of people trying to apply for government job jobs that we can't now fill.
Well, we'll argue that with the Chamber of Commerce. This was produced by them. I'm going to take them at their word at this point. Anyway, you look at it, there is a huge disparity between the wages and compensation as produced by the Guam Chamber of Commerce here. So we'll hold them to the veracity of what they put forward. There's also a study showing that the government of Guam has increased by 4.5% in terms of overall employment. Would you support that study?
Senator Duñez, that'll be your last question. Thank you.
Sorry, Senator, I, I wouldn't be able to confirm that number right now.
I'll get you the chart. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Senator Parkinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to do a quick recap of everything we talked about, so please forgive me if it's a little bit redundant from yesterday. So I just wanted to clarify and figure out, I know that, I understand what I understood from you yesterday. Can we afford this? From what I understand, we can, correct? He's having a microphone issue again.
We'll take a moment's recess for our technical difficulties. The Committee of the Hole is back from recess. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
I, well, I asked a question, so, if you're, whenever you're ready to answer, sir.
Yes, Senator, I'm comfortable that we can afford it.
Okay, and could you give us a brief rundown of what are the factors that made this affordable that have changed in the last recent years?
Well, the principal, the principal thing that has changed in the last three years is a government that's been running a surplus, whereas previously, for the previous 10 years at least, the government was running a deficit. On, on other occasions, when I've sat in this, in this spot, during budget hearings in particular, I try to make it clear that conditions are totally different when you run a deficit from when you run a surplus. When you're running a deficit, you're relying upon basically your vendors to, to bank the government. You know, unpaid bills are what are keeping the government going. And you're always trying to catch up with, with those bills, because they keep on coming in, and no matter how quickly you pay them, the, the bills will, will accumulate. When you're running a surplus, you're much better able to determine where you, where you can prioritize your, your needs, where you can prioritize your spending. And that's what we've done. And over the previous two years, we prioritized other groups of government employees who had fallen behind, the nurses, the teachers, law enforcement. Now it's the turn of those employees in the general pay plan. It wasn't the first choice that we made. It was actually the fourth choice that we made. And we didn't do it all at once. We spread out those costs until we could be absolutely certain that there was funding to be able to pay these, these, these wages that need now to be paid.
And is the, the, the balance books that we have, is that entirely because of federal funds? Or did this economic turnaround begin before the federal funds? Could you please elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. The first surplus that the government reported was before the COVID pandemic, and therefore was before the receipt of, of federal funds. Obviously, receipt of federal funds help. I mean, that was the intent of the federal funds, that that would support spending by states, territories, and municipalities because of the additional special costs that they were incurring as a result of the COVID pandemic. And the, the economy needed stimulating. But as I mentioned, the first surplus was reported before all that occurred.
Okay. And the necessity of these raises is because of, of a poor retention rate, of attrition due to retirement and, and loss of job, or loss of employees because of non-competitive wages. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, you do. And I'm going to ask Shane to, to speak about the number of open positions we actually do have that we can't fill or haven't been able to fill.
Yeah, I'd love to hear that.
So currently, DOE is announcing approximately 85 positions on continuous announcements. So a continuous announcement is one that doesn't close, so we can keep getting applicants. Those 85 vacancies represent about, or 85 positions, sorry, represent about 210 vacancies that we're trying to fill. These positions are predominantly into health agencies, right? Health agencies are about 30 to 35% of our vacancies we're trying to fill. Then you have all the other agencies that are non-law enforcement that are trying to recruit as well. And it varies from lower-level clerical administrative maintenance positions up to your professional level and managerial positions in all those agencies.
All right. And do I understand it correctly that there's about 3,500 people covered under the general pay plan?
That's, that's correct, at least 3,500.
Okay. And in the general pay plan, there are a few people by virtue of the scale who earn over $100,000 and are going to be getting an adjustment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
From what, from my count, it's 17 out of 3,500 people are eligible? Is that correct?
Looking at the agencies that are covered by the GPP, including DOE and GMH, that's correct.
All right. In the line agencies, I see there's two. One is yourself and is the, and the other is a veterinarian. In your opinion, is the veterinarian necessary to keep on payroll?
Very.
All right. I would, I would tend to agree with you. In GDOE, I noticed that two of the positions are ROTC officers that are federal, and those are federally funded, correct? And then the other two are high-level administrators?
That's correct.
All right. And then with GMH, it's nine pharmacists and four senior administrative staff?
According to the staffing data we got, yes.
All right. And can, can we afford to lose any of those pharmacists?
I'm sure the hospital would agree with me that we can.
All right. I see that one of the pharmacists is making about $100,000. All right, I see that one of the pharmacists is making about $100,000. And so even with this pay scale, she will still be at the bottom end of her national competitive wage? Is that correct? I, I see, I see the national average is about 139, and that bring her to about 132.
Part of, well, the pharmacists in and of itself, you know, they're pretty complex. In the past, we have had scales just for the pharmacists. But they're not only high demand for the hospital, but they're also utilized in both public health and Guam behavioral health. So even if market were to dictate more money, it's just the amount of pharmacists we have. So that's why you start seeing higher pay. But in particular, those pharmacists, if I'm not mistaken, at the hospital also have tenure, time in service. That's why you see a lot of them have higher wages.
All right, and it was your recommendation, or it was your suggestion that if this body were to arbitrarily remove the top end of the scale from the wage adjustment, that that would lead to wage compression? Do I have that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Would, would you anticipate that would lead to any violation of equal protection laws? If we were to exclude people on that pay scale? Would that, would that just defeat the purpose of the place scale? Would it make it just an arbitrary scale?
In regards to violating the law, I guess that would really depend on how it's enacted. But it will definitely end up in appeals if you base it on the employees themselves rather than the positions.
Okay, and I, am I, do I understand correct that this is not a windfall pay raise? This is more of a catch-up pay raise? Do I understand that correctly? Is it fair to characterize it as a catch-up pay raise?
Yes, Senator, we're looking, if you mean, we're, we're looking backwards to what we should have paid over the previous years. We're, we're not looking forward.
And, and with that, you're referencing that we were supposed, we were mandated by law to have three previous pay adjustments. And that's why the pay adjustment now is so big, is because we missed three previous pay adjustments. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, because of the, the funding situation.
Okay, and why was the law not followed back in those three previous mandated instances? Was it just a lack of funding because we were in a deficit?
Yes, it was a lack of funding.
All right, and you had said that if you follow the formula, I would have recommended a 45% increase, but you had actually weighted it down to 22% to make it a, a much more affordable package. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, the, the 45% was the simple average. But on looking at the numbers, it was clear that that was not going to be an, an appropriate approach. So we used a weighted average, which weighted it for the number of people in each category.
Okay, and so because you had to weight it in a downward direction, even with some of these pay adjustments, they're either at the bottom end of their competitive scale or still not competitive? Do I understand that correctly?
That was the general, general result, yes.
Okay, and with the general play plan, would that include procurement specialists?
Yes, sir.
Would being able to pay procurement specialists make it so that you wouldn't necessarily have to borrow procurement specialists from GPA in the future?
That would certainly be the case, and they're certainly one of the unfilled positions that we've got at DOE.
How does this raise compare against the basic rate of inflation? If you track it from when we should have played it? Are we just basically keeping up with inflation? Are we underwater? Can you kind of just talk on that a little bit?
Yes, I'm not, not a real expert in, in inflation. But as I, as I think I said yesterday, it's about 1.7% per year accumulated. That's probably a little less than the rate of inflation over the past 10 years. But as I say, I'm not an expert on that. 22% over 10 years, inflation, especially with the acceleration in the last two years, doesn't seem to be untoward.
All right, and are we seeing more applications in GovGuam since we started implementing the other pay raises? The teacher pay raises? Could you speak to that a little bit?
I, I don't have the specific numbers for GDOE or the hospital. But on our end, the, the nurses, we do get more applicants retention, of course, as pay moves, right, every year? Because it's been about maybe a year and a half since we moved the nurse pay. Retention does remain an issue. But nationwide, nurses are hard to recruit. From the hospital itself, in our last conversations, we haven't had any inquiry or anything to that nature of whether or not retention has gone up or down.
All right, and during the pandemic, we were kind of devastated by our tourism industry there, right? Would it be possible, would it be plausible to say that these raises will be sustainable as tourism comes back and our numbers begin to improve? Or can we sustain it if tourism makes no comeback? Like, give us a scale of how much are we relying on tourism to keep things in order in the future?
We can sustain it at the current levels of tourism. There are, tourism ebbs and flows. I mean, there are reasons why people come here on certain months and not, not on others. But, but based on the average flow of tourism, yes, yes, we can sustain this, this pay increase. We're sitting before you because we believe that to be the case.
All right, and do you, do you foresee problems with hiring and retention in the future when the Marine Corps base starts requiring administrative staff?
That will certainly be another option for, for people that either live here or want to live here to seek employment, basically from the federal government on the marine base. That, it's another option for them. We have to be competitive.
All right, and there's a perception that the government is hoarding a bunch of money and not spending it on the schools or on the pay raises. Could you speak to how much money has been spent towards small businesses, pandemics assistant, business rent subsidy, leaps, unemployment, and whatnot?
Yes, Senator, like last night, I don't have that number in my head. But generally, it's, it's well over 100 million that's been spent in support of businesses. In addition to that, there's been money spent through the agencies supporting individuals, and that, of course, goes back into the economy. And the, the unemployment payments that were available at the beginning of the pandemic also produced money that went back into the, into the economy and actually also produced a, a, an increase in the tax revenues because taxes were paid on, on that income. Sometimes people are in fact, you know, gained from, they were paid more from unemployment than they were in their previous private sector jobs.
All right, and this is not some secret plot to give 3,500, 3,500 people a raise just to get those 17 people all the extra money?
No, sir, that, that would be really, I'm not that devious.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. Senator Barnett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're in a really difficult position here with, with these pay raises. And I know the narrative has been that people are leaving the government of Guam, right? And, and they're not leaving to go to the private sector, right?
Well, I'm not sure we have real statistics on where people are going to.
Well, because everyone I know in the private sector is trying to get into the government of Guam.
Well, as, as we just heard, there are plenty of opportunities in the government of Guam.
Right.
And please make sure they come through our doors.
And I've been, I've been on your website and I've seen, so I know the hiring's going on. People still want to work for the government of Guam. I think even if they were being paid wages from 10 years ago, private sector, people still want to come work for the government of Guam. So really just competing with the autonomous agencies, the federal government, and then the stateside wages, right?
Certainly, I mean, we've had some, some of our employees, one, I think, was right at the end of the December at DOE, who moved to the mainland because her husband had a job on the mainland. No doubt, he was looking for a better opportunity, and she took that opportunity too.
Because if we're 45%, the comparisons were 45% behind some of the stateside wages, and we're given a 22% raise, we're, we're obviously not really going to be that competitive. It really comes down to these, these government employees who are invested in our island kind of sticking around, right? With, with this little extra bump, or this 22% bump?
Yes, we, we want to make sure that people who want to live here and want to contribute can and not suffer unreasonably because of the low rates of pay.
Right, like I said, we're just in a, in a difficult position because I was speaking with you during a recess yesterday, and, and you had said that this pay raise for the general pay plan, this 22% hike for all the employees in the general pay plan was basically take it or leave it? Because you don't believe we have the ability to go in and, and kind of fiddle around with who we think should get a raise, who we think shouldn't? Or, you know, maybe institute a sliding scale in terms of how highly someone's paid, getting maybe a lesser increase versus the real hard workers in the government on the lower end of the scale getting that, that full 22?
Thank you for the question. I, yeah, I think if that approach is taken, it, it mixes two aspects of compensation. Through the HAY method, right? We job size all the positions in the government. Those job sizes occur and result in pay grades. Those pay grades are given pay ranges associated to the size or the value or the impact of that position in the organization as a whole. When you're looking at actual employee pay and basing how much an increase should be based on where an individual employee lies, then you're actually looking into the performance side of things, right? Which is handled in a totally separate process, which they move within the scale in the steps. And that, those two can't be mixed for the threat of having it being highly inconsistent when you try to apply it.
Yeah, that's why I said you guys are basically saying we have to either accept the 22% pay raise for the entire general pay plan without fiddling with it? Or vote it down? Basically, that, those are our options according to you.
I think voted down is, is a kind of extreme, extreme way of looking at it. But that, it's easiest to accept an overall increase without running into possible challenges later.
Right, and, and I think what makes it challenging, and I'm just going to speak for myself and I won't speak for anyone else in, in the body, is that we can't get an accurate read on exactly how much is this going to cost? And we can't get an accurate read on the number of, you know, certain types of positions? Because, and I, I just don't get that part because there was so much lead up to this. There was four special session calls and, you know, the, the full court press from Adalupa, the attacks from these, you know, political action groups, and all that stuff. And then here we come, we get into this special session, we committed to work on this issue, then we ask questions and you don't have answers. You know, we asked, does it include the benefits? You said, it doesn't. We asked, how much are the benefits? You said, you don't know. We asked, how many unclassified employees are included in the general pay plan? And we hear a handful. And I, and I think to make a huge decision like this, based on, you know, terms like, we're not sure, or it's only a handful, I mean, it just puts me in a, because I want to make sure we're getting the best deal, right? So just going back to the unclassified positions, why do you think people say unclassified positions are political hires?
Senator, first of all, I didn't say I don't know about the benefits.
What did you say? You weren't sure, or you don't have the numbers?
I, I don't have the, you know, they're not listed out here. But I, I gave you the percentages that the benefits would cost.
What was it?
Pension is 28, it's 28.6%, and the Medicare is 1.45%.
Thank you. Well, I mean, obviously you didn't have it, or we would be good. It's 20, what is it, 28?
28.6%.
6 million?
Medicare, the Medicare conference, 1.45%.
Thank you.
Sorry, could you repeat your last question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to ask, why do people say unclassified employees are political hires?
Well, I think you have to ask the people that say that.
What's the process then of classified versus unclassified? Just take me back to the beginning. If, if we're hiring someone in a classified position versus hiring someone in an unclassified position, how do those processes differ?
If we're looking at, like the distinction, truly unclassified employees, like let's say a special projects coordinator, which is an actual created unclassified position, basically, let's say a department needs to utilize that position, they'll, since it does have a job specification, they'll ask us, hey, DOE, does this person meet the qualifications for the job? We'll say, yes, it does, yes, they do, or no, they don't. If they do...
So they have an applicant or they have a person pre-selected for the job?
Yes, so these positions don't go through the competitive process, right? Which is a job announcement.
So it's one of these who you know, like a connect kind of thing?
You know, it, it may be, we don't confirm that when we do get the requests, right? We take the request for face value. If they don't qualify, then we recommend that, you know, they don't hire them. But in that, you also have the classified titles that are being picked up as limited terms, right? Your, your program coordinators, community program aides, things like that. We do also do a check to make sure they qualify. Those positions pursuant to the rules also don't go through the competitive process of an announcement. Then you have the, you know, fully classified positions where we announce it, they apply.
More by the book, you mean?
Yeah, and so the, and I guess to, I guess clarify, so the limited terms of the unclassified, they're all covered under the rules. They have their own established processes. But the main difference is competing for the position versus being appointed to it, just on qualifying.
Right, and so you said that there are some classified positions, or there are unclassified positions with classified titles?
Classified positions or classified titles being hired in the unclassified service, like the limited terms and the temp appointment.
And this is the same type of process where there's no job announcement? Nobody knows about it? It's kind of like pari pari?
Well, it, it's, what happens is if they need to fill it quickly without waiting for the whole announcement period and everything, they'll usually pick someone up to fill the need right away.
And, and who controls how much these unclassified positions are, are paid? I mean, I know they're in the general pay plan, but go on.
For, for the limited terms and the temp appointments, the rules allow only at step one, right? Of whatever position. Those will be your permanent positions, like your program coordinator. So they only get picked up at step one. For the unclassified, through policy, they can be hired between steps one and 10. But the vast majority of unclassified type hires are with limited term and temp appointment within the line agencies.
Right, yeah, because I don't, I don't think that, I mean, at least me, I'm not comfortable giving a 22% pay raise to someone who got the job because they campaigned really hard for Lou and Josh or whoever. So how do we, how do we, and do you believe that we can cut these types of positions? Not people, because it's about the positions, not the people. How do, how do you think we can cut these positions out without maybe accidentally cutting out a legitimate person who's been hired to meet a legitimate need but is in an unclassified position with a classified title?
Without running a full scenario of how that would work, I mean, it could be mandated. But you run the risk of, let's say, having a, a limited term position being filled and a classified one at two separate salaries, right? Whether politically hired or not, right? So if both are legitimate, you then bifurcate how we pay a position in the government for the titles that are established to be in the general pay plan. You, if it's mandated that way, of course, you know, it'll be carried out that way. We don't recommend it because if an emergency need is there and people still won't come in to fill the need because of the salary, then we end up back at square one. We generally like to be consistent when it comes to the titles that are being used.
But are we here to promote and protect the merit system of the classified service with these pay raises? That's kind of the, the whole intent of this, right? The general pay plan? Maybe just go back, because you don't have the information. How many unclassified positions are in the general pay plan?
I, I did ask our team to pull that information for you when you requested. So we'll get the exact number of unclassified positions.
Right, and of these political hires that don't go through the normal competition, getting the job the good old fashioned way, who, what position title would you say in your estimation? Because I know you have so much experience, right? Is the most purely political? Is it the special project coordinators?
I, I, I wouldn't comment on what's purely political. A lot of our conversations, at least mine, with the departments are when they do need to fill a need. So...
I mean, but let's just be real with each other. When you talk about SPCs, right? Usually they're the, the political hacks.
Wow, wow, political hacks. I, I wouldn't categorize it as that for the position. Now, we don't look, HR in particular, doesn't look into the background of an employee, their political affiliations or anything like that, right?
But again, the SPCs specifically don't have to compete with anybody for the job? They just, they just get it?
That, that's true. That's true.
Senator, we, I, and I'm sure some other agency directors encourage anybody who's not a classified employee, and in particular, those whose terms of employment are coming to an end, to apply for the classified positions that are available and compete so that they can get into the classified service, the merit system to which you refer.
Yeah, that's why we want to be careful. And I think that we're a little handcuffed here in how we can go in. And I mean, the way I look at it, I just, for me, I was thinking about this last night, the general pay plan, I mean, it is just too general. It's wide, it's unwieldy, it doesn't allow us the opportunity to kind of go in. And when you look at the types of positions in this huge pay plan, it's hundreds of different types of positions, right? And so I don't know, we don't, if we even have the leeway to go in and make determinations as to, and I'm not, you know, saying, oh, let's cut everyone that half a person or the two people are making over $100,000. But I do think that we're trying to take a closer look at this, but, you know, lacking the information that we need, I don't know how we go into this proposal and kind of do our job to vet it or if we can even vet it.
And I guess just in the way I'm framing it in my head, right, and looking at a review like that, from the 2014 CWA, we didn't change the classifications covered, right? So we've maintained all of those, right? And it's about 1,000 classifications. A review like that would have to go through and determine. And I think when you look at the slice of positions we took in this study, you basically have to determine which of those positions we don't think should get the 22%.
If I just maybe allow to close, I mean, just look, look at some of these. So you have the camera operators at PBS, and then you've got the clinical pharmacists at GMH, and then you've got the, you know, custodian at GDOE. I mean, that is just so wide and so many different types of employees. When I was thinking about the solution to this, I think it would have to be to go into this general pay plan and break it up into a few different pay plans so that we have the leeway to go in and, you know, do our job.
Yes, you're absolutely right. I don't think, however, that this kind of general pay plan is so unusual in government entities because of the difficulty of doing what you just say of making a whole lot of separate pay plans to cover every activity that government does.
And just to add to that, you know, the current classification plan is already separated into categories, like you said. So of course, the maintenance, custodial, and other professions are categorized. In our report, we laid out the differences in each of those categories, right, that we found when we looked at the external market. So essentially, hypothetically...
Can I, Mr. Shane, so, yeah, there are subcategories in the GPP, but do you believe that we have the legal authority to go into these subcategories and say, okay, you're not going to get the raise?
Point of inquiry?
Please state your point of inquiry, Senator Fisher.
Yes, ma'am. Does the time limit cap apply to all speakers?
It does. I apologize.
Thank you, Senator Fisher, for that. Appreciate that. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
I wasn't aware. I wasn't notified. Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'll see you in the next round.
Speaker Trelawney, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, first of all, we're trying to do this pay raises as part of a recruitment and retention strategy for the government of Guam, right? So that's what you're saying. We're trying to address a problem of recruitment. There are so many vacancies in hard-to-fill positions. There is also a retention issue that we're having. But, yeah, that's, for me, that's the relevance of these questions regarding the unclassified versus classified, right? So if we really are trying to do that, why are any unclassified positions included in this strategy? Those are non-competitive. They are not part even of the, I guess, permanent strategy. And so why are we putting raises on positions that we are not having a hard time filling? Those are not competitive. They shouldn't be hard to fill. Where we really need it is in this merit system, in the classified system, so we can do, I guess, what we're mandated to do under the Organic Act. And that is really only, there's only one pay system we're allowed to do, and that is the one where appointments and promotions are made accordance with the merit system.
Yes, Madam Speaker, you know, I asked that question too. How, we have, for instance, at DOA, we have two programs, the ERA program, the HAF program. They're federally funded, and many of these LTAs are in federally funded programs because the funding only lasts for a limited period. I asked the question, is it really feasible for us to pay people doing basically the same job? It's kind of what we were talking about yesterday, pay doing the same job as a classified person differently from the classified person, simply because the terms of their employment are different. And the answer I got was, no, we can't do that.
You cannot? You mean, that's a legal answer that you've received?
That's the, when we just, I didn't ask the Attorney General, but when we looked at the laws and regulations internally at DOA, that's the conclusion we came to.
I'm thinking the opposite, that if I'm competing for a job and I get that job and I get the promotion, and then someone else doesn't have to go through that process and gets the same pay as me, then I feel like that would be the injustice there. But I would like to know if you've got anything in writing that explains that so we can use that as a basis going forward and maybe, you know, fashioning, you know, what we want to do with this, these pay plans. I don't know if those unclassified pay plans were established by the legislature or not. However, when you did these pay plans, we established yesterday that you, these were established pursuant to the hay methodology, and you told us the internal and the external comparisons that you did. So let's talk about the internal ones. So you compared current GPP salaries, general pay plan salaries, with the same types of positions in autonomous agencies. And on pages seven and eight, or seven, you lay out a comparison. And it looks to me like, if I'm reading this correctly, so please confirm, that even with the raises for the line agencies, they are all still going to be below the autonomous agency pay for the very similar category positions, except for maybe one category 10, custodial, labor, maintenance, and related. The rest, none of these looks to go below 22%. They're all above. The difference, in other words, between the autonomous pay and the line pay is way beyond 22%. And so even with this 22% raise, our line agency employees are still below the autonomous agencies. And you, you described that very well in this document, and you say that that's really one of the issues that needs to be addressed, but it's not addressed in the recommendations. That's my disappointment. It's like, we point out exactly what the problem is. We point out the inequity that we're trying to resolve, and yet you allow these autonomous agencies to continue to increase salaries even after we do this 22% for the line. In other words, we will never be able to catch up to those autonomous agencies at, with the recommendations that you've, you've put in here. There's no, there's no control of that.
Well, the autonomous agencies, the compensation plans are approved, I guess are devised by the agencies themselves, and they're approved by the boards of those agencies. We have no control over that. We're pointing out the problem. Senators, you, you have some control over that. So we're hoping that you will address that. But we can't, the governor can't, because the governor has no authority over those agencies.
She doesn't?
No, she doesn't.
Well, you, you, all right, well, you gave her some recommendations in those regards. All right, well, what about, was, then we talk about the external comparisons that you did? Let me just, before I get there, I'm also worried that, so we're not going to catch up to the autonomous agencies, even with a 22% pay raise. In other words, clerks to clerks, accounting to accounting, biological science to biological science employees, we're not going to catch up to those autonomous agencies. The second thing is, these other agencies that we've added on have the same authority to establish their pay, a lot of them. And they have been doing that, and they have been giving raises without our say in the matter. And now I feel like, you know, we, we are kind of just perpetuating inequity. We don't know that by giving them these amounts that we are creating any equity or we are just further exacerbating the inequity between these agencies. And I guess that's just a rhetorical question because that seems very clear. So the other question is...
Senator, it goes even...
Thank you, Speaker. That is your time. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Byrne. You can finish your answer.
It's not just pay, Senator. It's the ability, they have the ability to establish positions or numbers of people in positions far greater than the line agencies who are subject to budgetary constraints. So there's that factor that we want to point out too.
Right. And we need your help to fix this. We can't do it ourselves. We cannot analyze these kind of things without you. I wanted to ask about the comparison to the private employees. There's nowhere in here that you say you compared it to salaries around Guam. And I want to know if you're saying that this, these documents issued by the chamber are not accurate? They were not considered in your analysis? I don't even see that federal employees on Guam salaries, we're losing employees to going, going over to the federal government as well. Those salaries don't seem to be included in the analysis either. We compared it to state site salaries. I'm not sure those are private or what type of sector those are from. But what about those two where the private sector on Guam and the federal jobs on Guam?
Speaker, thank you.
Okay, to that question. Yes, we, you know, as far as the federal government is concerned, we did take a look at them. And, you know, in external market, right, we did predominantly base it on Bureau of Labor and Stats, Department of Labor, National, US. It's, you know, it's the way they split up their data, right? They do split it up into different types of government and different, you know, sets, you know, county, state, city, federal. As far as the private sector, you know, we, we looked where we were getting feedback as to where we were losing people at the time, right? And yes, we didn't get a lot of feedback that we were losing people to the private sector. So when we're looking at our competition, basically, it was the autonomous agencies, and we used the Department of Labor stats as it was the most comprehensive to include all those sources you're talking about.
Do you have any reason to think this is incorrect?
Thank you, Speaker. That completes our second round of questions. And I'd like to thank the panel for being here.
I had asked that question, though, if they could just answer. I had asked it. If this, if you think that this was incorrect.
Speaker, thank you. I'll let the panel give any closing remarks that they'd like.
Madam Chair, there's a full round to go to all these other individuals who haven't gone yet. This is only the first row of the second round.
Yeah, I could be the last one.
And if they... Answer my question.
I would answer that question saying, I can't verify where they got the statistics for that. So I wouldn't be able to say. The only thing is, to reiterate what Director Byrne said, $35 an hour is an average for government of Guam seems very high.
Thank you, Mr. Nauta. Senator Paris?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just actually have similar, very similar questions regards to the general pay plan. So are the scales tied to metrics?
Metrics of performance is what you're asking. No, the scales, straight external and internal analysis as far as salaries. Metrics are a separate system that's handled within movement through the steps. So step one, step two. GovGuam law already tells us how much someone should get upon a satisfactory performance evaluation, which is one step, what do you call it, within their designated pay range.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm trying to compare it to like the teacher pay plan. It's tied to education and years of service, of course. And so there's nothing, basically, I guess, I guess that leads to another question is, how are we assured that the evaluations have been done regularly on a regular basis?
And then, again, not to mix the two processes, evaluations are done, I'd say regardless of adjustment to the structure. So evaluations are turned in by departments and processed by our office, right, for salary increments. Those will continue regardless of a structure adjustment. So I mean, I hope that answers the question. We wouldn't base a structure adjustment on the frequency or the turning in of the performance evaluations of employees.
HR has a system for monitoring evaluations and making sure that they are turned in timely.
Yeah, I think that's one of the issues, right? Because you have employees that have been working for many years. They never receive a valuation. They never get reclassified. They stay at the same pay. And I think that's really an injustice to the civil service workers. And, you know, I think like the previous speaker said, you know, we're possibly exacerbating the inequities within the line agencies. I understand the pay raises across the board, but we have to also acknowledge their inequities that currently exist, and how do we address those? And that's why, you know, I think, you know, there's other measures that we need to implement, you know, other than the pay raises or in addition to the pay raises. So exit interviews, how many exit interviews, what percentage of exit interviews are done after employee leaves their service?
We used to have an exit interview process, but during the pandemic, we took it down to focus on core functions. We haven't yet put it back in place, but we are looking at options on how to make it more accessible. The previous process was basically fill out an exit survey and turn it into our office. We are trying to work to get that more accessible online electronically so they can just fill it out and basically turn it in anonymously.
Has there been analysis done on those exit interviews? And are they done across the board or is it just sporadically done?
Well, they're voluntary in nature. We, when we did do it, we didn't require it. So we basically just received who was willing to turn in an exit survey when they left.
Because that's really useful information to address any of these, you know, the reasons why employees want to quit, right? It's not just pay. It's, you know, I hear frustrations, frustrations with how things are managed. So I want to go back to LTAs. Will the LTAs be a part of this increase?
In our, in our recommendations, yes, it does include LTAs.
All LTAs?
That's, that whole, the classified titles, yes.
So if we were to implement, break up the general pay plan into smaller pay plans, you know, what would you recommend?
On a technical aspect, I wouldn't recommend doing it. It becomes, it may become cumbersome to administer. It may have an unintended effect of adversely impacting employees, depending on which positions they hold, especially if we're looking at, let's say we just followed the raw percentages like the director said for those categories, then you'll have one category probably pitted against another because one got 41% and one got 12%. And they'll probably end up in our office asking, how come that person over there got 41% instead of 12% or something like that? So it's happened in the past, you know, and every pay plan implementation is like that. I mean, none of them are perfect. Every time they go in, they always have issues and problems. But when they do come, we do try to manage it. One of the best ways we've been able to manage it is having consistency in how we put it in. Otherwise, if it becomes separated out, then, you know, it becomes a lot of explaining onto why we did it that way, how we did it that way. And at that point, we'd be studying different categories of positions every day to make adjustments annually versus a pay plan in totality. And it will get very difficult administratively to handle.
And Senator, that's kind of what the autonomous agencies did when they set up their own pay scales. And that, that is part of the origin of the problem that... own pay scales. And that, that is part of the origin of the problem that the speaker was talking about.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the cost. So what this bill does, would pay for half a year. And if we look at, if we're going to sustain this, it's going to be, you know, basically double. And so from what I understand is that the amount does not include benefits, right? So what is the estimated amount if we're going to include benefits for the whole year?
Senator Duenis gave me the number, said it was 6 million.
Can you, can you repeat it for the record, please?
He said it was 6 million, and I would agree with that.
Six, six?
In a full year, that would be 12 million. But as was stated previously, these pay increases have been embedded into the fiscal '24 executive budget that was submitted to the legislature, and those benefits were also included in the embedded numbers.
Okay, so the upcoming budgets will include the increases plus benefits?
Yes, Senator.
So we're not going to be taken away from surplus? Is that correct? Will it be taken from surplus funds?
Not, well, the fiscal '24 budget, like other budgets, should be balanced and therefore there won't be any surplus. When you, when you fix the budget, there's no, there's no surplus anticipated.
Are we anticipating EITC reimbursement with this upcoming budget, when you did the budget?
Yes, because it's embedded now in, in federal law.
So how much was estimated?
The, the number is round about 120 million. I don't remember the exact amount that was in the budget.
So I thought, historically, it's been roughly 50 million. How did it get to 120 million?
50 million is EITC, and the balance is CTC, child tax credit.
But isn't there a sunset for that one?
No, no, they're both, they're both in the federal law.
I think that's all my questions. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Paris. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up if the Finance Office was able to get the information I'd asked for yesterday with regards to our budgets for at least a 10-year period for the government of Guam, and then also just the number of employees that we've had annually for that period as well. So we know how many actual employees we've had in the government for each of those years.
Yes, Senator, I was able to, yes, Senator, I was able to compile some information regarding your request yesterday.
Okay.
What, what we had here is, as far as the total number of employees in government of Guam, I cannot give you an exact number simply because the staffing patterns that we use basically are the staffing patterns that were provided in the budget. For FY22, we took the actuals as of September, but, you know, it is now March, six months later, and I'm sure those numbers have, have already changed. But in totality, you know, I'm still trying to gather that, that information. But as far as, I believe what you requested, you wanted to know what the HAY plan, I mean, the GPP, or the 22% would include by, by the five pay plans that you were requesting. So we got that information. And I provided to you, it's kind of an entity that has all the information that we had. So I can disperse that. If you want me to read it, I can tell you.
That would be fine. But even, even if you have information from last year, I mean, whatever you, you looked at as the official for that time of doing the budget, because I really want to get to the bottom of this idea that the number of employees are decreasing in government. I'd like to know, I think the public would like to know. I mean, I want to make sure when we're, we're making these generalized statements that they're actually based on fact. So what, what do you officially have and how many years back in terms of number of employees in the government of Guam? And again, what, what are the annual amounts of the budget for those fiscal years?
Senator, we're kind of like finalizing that. I'm looking at my staff now. So hopefully by, hopefully within an hour, I can get you that information to be exact as to how many positions or how many employees were on board as of September 30th last year and the cost.
Okay. In fairness, then, Madam Chair, because I think it's important information. I don't know, I might ask, you know, we have another round because I think this is such an important subject that if, you know, we're requesting information, that we have the opportunity to get it and then have the opportunity for the public to be aware of it. So I'm going to ask on the record when that information is provided, if we could have the Finance Office announce those figures, if there's no objection to that, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you very much, Senator Brown.
You know, I know we've had a lot of questions and discussions with regards to some of the disparity. And I just want to bring up an example again because, you know, especially when Senator Blas elaborated yesterday and outlined essentially that some of the most critical positions that we funded last year, that we determined to be most critical priorities in the government are at a lower amount than what we're proposing with regards to this general plan that's, that we are looking at right now. And I want to give an example, and this is something might be familiar to you at Department of Administration, where the disparity is and where, even though I recognize this general pay plan is, you know, been put in place, I didn't vote for it. I might vote to change it. I might vote to make a decision that this is not how we're going to determine how we're going to give increases if we're going to give increases. But just an example, you can have a personal specialist at Department of Administration who, you know, some people may say, hey, $43,000 is a lot of money. But I'd look at positions under $45,000 or $50,000, or maybe in $55,000 because that's kind of what the legislature here is earning. And on a monthly basis, the increase for this individual on a 22% increase is going to be $728 about. Divide that by the pay period, and this individual is going to take home $364 more. And I'm sure that would matter, the cost of gas and other things, groceries, they're probably just going to barely break even. Let's take the Personal Services Administrator who's earning $101,371 annually. Per hour, $48.74. A 22% increase will amount to about $22,301. Increase on a monthly basis for that position at $101,000 is $1,715 per month. So I, I don't know, I have a difficult time, you know, balancing that, that that's somehow the priority of what we should fund. Because I understand, I think we all recognize the increased cost of living right now, even though, again, in comparison to the private sector and the figures that have been provided, government employees right now earn far more at the most average salary. So I think it's important to recognize that. And that's something that, you know, I'm really concerned about as to whether or not this is the best option of moving forward with this plan with the expectation that we should go ahead and fund it, irrelevant of the funding source. And that's why I also wanted to, to get the information on our annual budgets. Because, you know, Mr. Burns, you mentioned yesterday that on the basis of the last three years that we've had these increased revenues, that that somehow is going to set the pattern moving forward. But you weren't able to provide specifics on what you think those amounts are going to be. And I think it's, wouldn't it be fair to say isn't hard to predict? Wouldn't it be hard to predict exactly what our revenues are going to be three years from now, four years from now, six years from now?
I think it's hard to predict that they're going to increase as they, as you might want to postulate that they decrease.
Well, I'm going to give an example, because as I mentioned, I know I'm running out of time. During the Adablas administration, we also had high revenues. But when the Japanese bubble burst, everything after that was a downhill slide in terms of our ability to, to fund the government. And I think that's important to recognize. Things are unpredictable, unpredictable as this pandemic. And it's hard for me to make decisions moving forward based on an extraordinary circumstance of the pandemic and the large amount of financial infusion by the federal government. I think it's hard to determine what our annual revenue stream is going to be moving forward. And with that, I will end at this point as my time is coming to a close. But I'll probably ask for another round. Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Luhon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Pat, or good afternoon, panel. How are you doing this afternoon? Good. Okay. Mr. Burns, I want to, and go back to some of my questioning from, from, from last night in regards to the sustainability of this pay plan, this 22% raise in this, this pay plan. Now, we had pointed out, or you had pointed out, that EITC, Section 30, of course, military buildup, and, and of course, the Section 30, as soon as the 5,000 Marines and/or their families come to Guam, that, okay, the, the Section 30 money will, will, will rise, right? I mean, those, those are big portions of the sustainability. Am I correct in that?
Yes, and, and, you know, this partly answers Senator Brown's question. Yes, in all probability, taking into account all these factors and all the uncertainties that might happen, yes, the probability is that they will continue to increase.
And the reason why I'm, I'm asking this, because this is something, I mean, of course, the EITC, for the longest time, we didn't get the reimbursement. We just recently gotten that. And at any, at any point in time, Congress can pull that back as well and say, we're no longer going to fund EITC. And, and the reason why, the reason why I'm asking this is because a few years back, former delegate Madeleine Bredalio was pushing for, of course, the war reparations, which we, we finally paid, paid out. And when Congress did not want to pay that out themselves, she had to resort to Section 30 money as a payment for that. But she was assured by Congress that this was just a place order, that that would be reimbursed, that the Section 30, using the Section 30 money for the reimbursement or for, for war reparations was going to be, again, a place order that would be reimbursed in Congress. And that was, that was years ago when she was still in, in Congress. Do you, do you know if we got that reimbursement? Have we gotten reimbursed for, for, for that? That we were assured, that we were promised to get the reimbursement?
Senator, if you're referring to the funding of the war claims reparations-
Yes.
-by, by the, paid out by the federal government, that was funded by a restriction on our Section 30, our Section 30 receipts. We've now got through that, and our Section 30 receipts have now recovered to former levels, and, and we don't have that issue. But I think you're referring to-
No, no, what I'm saying, okay, the Section 30 money, of course, has, has risen. But what I'm saying is that, because we, we basically had to pay it out ourselves. It was our money that paid for it. I mean, the money, it was supposed to be separate. What, what had happened was Congress was asked to pay for it outside, like they're proposing for, for San Francisco right now, like they're proposing. I don't know how many billions of that for, for African-American reparations. I think that, that's what they're, that's what they're proposing. That's, that was the same proposal in the very beginning. But Congress didn't want, I mean, it was, Senator, I think Senator McCain, that they didn't want to, I mean, I, no, Senator McCain, I think, was, was willing to give that. But because we, we said it was all or nothing, he said, okay, never mind, not, not, we're not going to, we're not going to give it to you. We finally said, okay, let's go ahead and do it with these, with these provisions after a certain, a certain date. But now, that was, McCain's offer was not on the table. So now we had to pay it, we, we looked for the source of funding, and it was, is the Section 30, 30 money, which was never identified, that was never identified in the very beginning. It was supposed to be a separate payment from, from Congress. But we instead use the Section 30 money, and that portion of the Section 30 money that was supposed to pay it out was supposed to be just a, again, a place order to be replaced. Not necessarily that, it's just because Section 30 money has gone up because of the more military here. Just because it's gone up, it doesn't mean that has been replaced to reimburse us for, 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 for the Section 30 money that we, we used to pay for our own war reparations.
That's, that, that may be true. But I think the difference that you're referring to, Senator, is the difference between a promise and what's already in law. And what's already in law is the EITC.
Well, Congress can make any laws they want to do as well.
Of course they can.
I mean, a good example, again, is, is the compact impact at this point. They're, they're putting zero money in there at this point. But they're wanting, they're wanting the compact, the, the, the folks that, that come from the compact impact states to, they're pushing to be able, for them to have all the benefits that U.S. citizens have. And, and that being said, that we're going to have to fund that. It's zero funding at this point. So that's what I'm saying. Yeah, a law is a law. But who makes the laws? And the ones that makes, make the laws can come back and, and, and remove the laws. They're, you know, the current legislature is not, Congress is not beholden to, to the previous legislature.
Any Congress-
That's right.
-and any legislature contain any law of, of any nature-
Of course.
-both, both creating revenue streams and decreasing revenue streams. But I hope, sincerely, that were we ever in the, in danger of losing this very valuable new revenue stream that we've got, that I'm going to be right behind the governor, and I hope you'll be right next to me, trying to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying in regards to have we got the reimbursement. Going back to some of the research we have done, like, for example, in regards to parity, like, the treasurer of Guam that's making $87,300, the 22% raise would, will, will put that person at $19,200, getting the, getting $1,477.67 per month compared to the cashier that's making $24,000. That $22,000 raise will be actually a 5440, 38, and that person would be making $41849 per, per month. And so I'm just saying, in the parity and the equity and the 22% raises, is, again, the, the higher incomes at, at that same level will be making a lot more than the folks in, in the bottom tier. My time is up, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. Okay, thank you very much. Senator Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, lady and gentleman. I guess let's go to Mr. Byrne, Burns. We hear a lot about, at least we have heard a lot about merit bonuses. What are those?
Senator, just so everybody knows, it's Byrne, not Burns, right?
I'm, I'm sorry.
The name is Byrne, not Burns.
Okay. Mr. Byrne, what is a merit bonus?
Actually, I'm going to ask the Personnel Services Administrator to answer that.
Merit bonus is a bonus received based on an employee's performance evaluation, in which they currently, if they receive an outstanding final rating for their evaluation, they get granted a 3.5% bonus.
Those who have been awarded merit bonuses, when they are awarded the bonus, does the right to that money vest in the employee?
It, once it's achieved, the obligation for us to pay the merit bonuses stays with the government, yes.
Okay. So failure to pay it doesn't constitute a waiver or a lapse or anything, then, right?
No, it does not.
Has the government of Guam paid all merit bonuses that are due to employees?
The last merit bonuses that were paid were, I believe, calendar year 2012. So none have been paid since then.
So since 2012, we haven't, we haven't kept current with the merit bonuses?
They haven't been paid since then, no.
How much do you think we owe our, our employees in, for merit bonuses? Just, you can ballpark, that's fine.
I think I ought to answer that question, Senator. It's around about 6 million.
I'm sorry?
It's around about 6 million.
$6 million? Okay, Mr. Byrne, why don't we just, instead of, you know, why don't we get our house in order before we start giving away more money? Why don't we pay the, why don't we use some of this money to pay the merit bonus first?
Well, we are doing just that, Senator. The HR department was required by law to reconsider and reconfigure and make a proposal for updating the merit bonus evaluation in order that it should be paid. And that's in the law. So we've done that, and it has, we've recently completed it, and it's been provided to the governor for, for her approval. And upon her approval, we have the lists already prepared for the payment out of, of the merit bonus.
Good heavens. Some of these people have been waiting 11 years. What's the holdup?
The, the holdup is, we had to, we had to do that, that task along with all the other tasks that we're doing in, in HR in order to, including this, including- tasks that we're doing in, in HR, in order to, including this, including the pay plans for the, for the law enforcement and, and other groups that we're doing, all at the same time. So, we've completed, but we've completed all these tasks now. And, and just to be clear, what is going to, the, the governor has, has made it clear that she is going to pay the merit bonuses for the years in which her administration was in, in process.
In process, what does that mean?
For, it, it's for years, because she was elected in 2018, it's for the year, fiscal year 2017 onwards, with the exception of the year, it's 2019, right? The 2019, where this body determined that the merit bonus should not be paid out, so no payments will be paid for 2019.
I'm, okay. Do you know why the governor has decided that she will only pay merit bonuses for, only pay the merit bonuses that accrued while she was in office? Second part of the question is, do you agree that she is essentially stiffing the employees who were working for the government of Guam between 2012 and, and fiscal year 2017?
I, I, I don't know. I can just surmise that she felt responsible for this omission during the course of her administration. But to answer the second part of your question, I think you have to ask previous governors why they didn't pay out the merit bonus.
Well, I think that, I think that's a fair question, but the fact is, they're no longer governor. They don't have the power to do it and make it right today, whereas Lordis Leon Guerrero does have the power to make it right today. I, I see no rational reason for skipping over so many years of people who have been waiting for so long just to pay people who may or may not have voted for her, I suppose, in her first administration. Do you see a rational reason?
Yes, I do.
Please explain.
I, the, the, the merit bonus, I, I can't say this is necessarily the governor's reasoning, but as far as I'm concerned, it seems not unreasonable to assume the liabilities of your own administration and not assume the liabilities of someone else's omission.
Well, this isn't a personal question, sir. She is the governor of Guam. Her responsibilities extend to the entire island, no matter when a debt or a liability accrues. The fact is, the government still owes the money. She doesn't get to choose what she can do simply because she was elected to office in a certain year. Do you agree that that money is owed to the people of Guam, to the employees of Guam, rather?
I think this is a debate that you, you need to have with her.
No, it's okay. No, that's fine. I'm asking you the question. Do you think it's fair?
I, I think it's, I think it's fair. I think it's fair that it's being addressed. I think it's fair that it's finally being take, taken care of now. I think it's fair that it's, it's, it's systematic, and the alternative would seem to be not to address it at all, which is what happened before, and that clearly isn't an appropriate way forward.
Well, I agree, but I disagree that she's being aggressive at all or in any way. I don't know that a person who's been waiting for 12 years for earned income, and it waits and waits and waits, I don't know that they would agree that Governor Leon Guerrero is treating them, them fairly. Perhaps they would. I think, sir, there was a, a document was circulated to us, and I believe it was generated by the Guam Chamber of Commerce. It's entitled Guam Average Hourly, Hourly Earnings by Sector. Do you have that?
Yes, I do have that piece of paper that was handed out at the beginning of this session.
Thank you. It seems to say on the, I'm going to call this the first page, says that the government of Guam's average hourly earnings by sector is $35.39. Do you see that?
I do. I, I don't know what by sector means, but still--
Well, they seem to have broken out sector, and by sector, I think we can assume that they mean transportation and public utilities, heavy construction, all other manufacturing, all other services, manufacturing, construction, et cetera. Do you agree, sir, that at least according to this chart, GovGuam is compensated higher than any of the, any of the sectors I just mentioned?
Well, I addressed this, this issue earlier in this session.
Please address it again.
$35.39 per hour is roughly, it's something over $75,000 a year.
Wow, okay.
I don't, from the statistics that we gave you yesterday, there are very few people in the general pay plan earning $35.39, i.e., $75,000 a year. So, I, I can't verify or even sympathize with these numbers that were produced by the Guam Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
So, they would have to explain where they got their numbers from. It certainly doesn't agree with our numbers.
If you could educate me, the, the calculation of the 22% increase, is that based on the actual salary somebody is earning today, or is the 22% based on the salary that it should be, had they received their merit bonuses?
Just to clarify, should an employee receive a merit bonus, it wouldn't factor into their base pay, so we wouldn't take the merit bonuses into consideration.
Okay, okay, that's exactly, okay. So, the merit bonuses, as you calculate the 22%, are not taken into, into your analysis?
They're not consolidated into the base pay. They're just a, a one-off payment.
The merit bonuses?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so the 22% is based on just the base pay?
Yes, sir.
This is just a, kind of a hypothetical. I've got some evidence before me that there is a procurement officer of the government of Guam who's making $101,000 a year, and that works out to $7,798 per month, and their 22% bonus, or raise, rather, will give them $22,000. And another, another individual who's simply, who is a supply clerk, is making $26,000 a year at this agency, and with the 22%, they will get roughly a quarter, a quarter of the highly paid individual. They will get $5,801 as an increase, 22% increase. Do you think that person might feel aggrieved?
I, I, I think when looking at those salaries of those positions, right, you know, these positions that we're discussing with the higher salaries, they're higher graded. You know, these are heads of divisions that perform critical functions for the government. They're, they're not, yes, they do have positions under them that, of course, get paid lower, but that's based on their job size. The HAY method is a way to kind of standardize how we look at jobs. And yeah, mathematically speaking, 22% applied across the board will equal a higher increase for those in higher salaries. But I, I don't think it dilutes the, the importance or the function of the position that they hold. And to equate that, to, I guess, adjust percentages to penalize those in leadership positions that hold the functions of the government and run all these departments, at that point, I think the aggrieved employee would be the manager.
Okay. Well, I guess this is more of a comment than a question, but this 22% pay raise appears to be arbitrary and inequitable, or inequitable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Canata.
Is the Guam Legislature under the GPP?
Employees of the Guam Legislature are not covered by the GPP.
Does the legislature have unclassified employees?
Frankly, Senator, I don't know.
They're all unclassified. Can we physically afford this?
Are you talking about the legislature or--
The GPP.
Yes.
We can afford it, right? We have money in the bank.
Yes.
This is not 2017, when people took pay raises and 84% of the cabinet had six-figure salaries.
This certainly isn't 2000, the, the finances are different from 2017, and the circumstances are different.
Yeah, and then, some of them didn't even pay back those salaries. Is DPR in, is DPR covered on this, GPP?
Parks and Rec? Yes.
DPR, Parks and Rec.
Yeah, for, for the, for those people in the, in this plan, yes.
How about Guam Election Commission?
The, no, this commission sets their pay.
Okay.
So, if, if I can just clarify a little bit on GEC, they do, they do try to stay consistent with our positions and pay established for our positions. That's always been what they've been working with, with DOE. So, in that vein, yes. What we mean by the commission sets the pay is, whenever they look at adjusting pay, of course, for their employees, they consult with the commission to get approval to do so.
Their employees are unclassified?
That's correct.
Yeah. They're not all politically hired either. Starbase SPC, which is under DOE, is a line, which is a line agency, has to have their employees unclassified, because there is no general pay plan particular for them to be hiring in DOE. Correct?
I believe in my initial discussions with that department, that's correct.
Okay. They're not political hires. There's just no pay plan for them. $6 million are owed to our people in merit bonuses. This will justify that, correct? I mean, it will pay them?
Not this, but we are separately instituting a process to pay them.
It, does the GovGuam, you know, we're talking about private sector earnings by sector, I guess, and they're stating that the government of Guam contributes, or, I guess, is severely gapped in salary, correct? If, if we implement this raise from '22 to 2019, I guess, there's a severe pay gap, payment gap, right? In salary?
Well, that, if you're referring to this sheet, yes, but we, I'm not clear where these numbers come from, and they certainly don't appear to be reasonable compared with the numbers that we have already provided to you.
So, then I think it would be sound for us to just raise the minimum wage to bridge the gap.
Well, yes, but--
Because we don't know if these numbers are correct. We don't know if these numbers are correct. So, if we bottom line, just raise the minimum wage, we'll close the gap.
So long as you know what the gap is, yes.
Yeah, we're still looking for the gap. We should pay for gap insurance, because we're in a collision course. Okay, that's all. You have a good day. Thank you, guys, for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Canata. Senator Sinagastin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a simple question, you know, maybe a reminder, that for the previous years, when we passed the budget, the budget always states, every agency should pay their prior year obligations. Am I correct, Mr. Burn? And, and all we can answer that also. Mr. Burn?
Prior year obligations should be paid.
Okay. Can you confirm that, Steve?
Yes, Senator, and, and there is a provision in, in the annual budget that would have for the last couple of years that authorize the administration to liquidate or at least pay all outstanding prior year obligations of the government.
Okay. And four years ago, when we took over, I became appropriation, we made sure that was in the budget. So, when anyone here would like to say that the current governor is not handling that prior year, it was. It's the administration or not, the agency still were putting their numbers together. They were still trying to figure, so even six million today, it's six million because they dragged it, they didn't do it. Number two, when we want to talk about limited term or merit bonus, I don't know how many of you were a classified employee in 2012 or '16, but I was. I was awarded a merit bonus. Was it given the pay? No. Were there limited term employees in the GovGuam in the previous administration? Yes, at revenue tax, there was. There was quite a few. And that has always been the intent, that if your hire is a limited term, hopefully you would qualify to apply for a position of classified. I know that for a fact, because there was many efforts done where I worked at revenue tax to get them qualified, and many of them couldn't qualify. They were vetted, that they met the minimum, because that's the process for my colleagues, if you're not aware of how they do limited term. They have to be vetted, and, Mr. Burn, maybe you can va, validate that. They have to be vetted first, they meet the minimum, and hopefully, the position they applied for, they would qualify. Mr. Burn?
Yes, and I'll, I'll ask the Personnel Administrator to, to speak to this too, but we make sure that everyone who applies for a job in the government is qualified for the position for which they're applying, classified or unclassified. And, and HR has a process, and I'll ask Shane to take you through that process.
Yes, you're correct with the limited term employees. Generally, the competitive process, right, you have to apply, they may meet the minimum qualification, but they're also ranked amongst everyone else that they competed with, and I think that's what you're alluding to. Hopefully, hopefully, they rank high enough on that list to get consideration to be selected for the position.
Thank you. If I, if I heard it correctly, you mentioned earlier, Mr. Burn, it was actually 45%, but because of the cost, the recommendation was 22% increase because of funding. Am I correct?
Yes, the funding, and to take out the anomalies that we found by just taking a simple average. But funding is obviously, in, in all that we do, funding is obviously a prime consideration.
Okay. So, that being said, and with the issue of certain people with higher salaries, I hate to ask Shane this, but if we're going to talk about people that make a certain amount, would that impact you? And I hate to use you as an example, but you do a lot, and you pretty much do a lot by yourself in DOE. I know that. You have a few staff, but if we were supposed to use the basis of anybody making a certain amount, because I know for a fact, if I was still at revenue tax, I wouldn't be qualified based on how people are talking here today. Don't reach this amount, you don't get the pay raise, and that wouldn't be fair. Sir, I hate for you, put you on the spot, but, you know, you do a lot, I know that. I call you on many issues dealing with personnel, sir.
You know, not just in reference to me, but when looking at the positions that earn, even from the $80,000 salary range up, again, these are the critical managers and high-end supervisors, right? You're talking about the heads of public health, you're talking about the heads of DRT, you're talking about all those agencies that need to move forward. You know, choosing how to implement based on an individual's salary is inconsistent at best, right? And we do that, whenever we implement these scales, and we've, we've done them quite often, is, you know, it, when you move to do it in that vein, it's really not taking a look at the position and taking a look at the employee. But the performance evaluation system was designed to take a look at the employee, which has its own process, separate and aside from a pay structure increase.
Thank you. Also to mention that there are some positions I'm familiar with, the deals in finding out if we're getting the proper amount on EITC or any reimbursement from federal government, and that's handled at revenue tax, I know that for a fact. And the individual that would do it is somebody at a position that, under the general pay plan, would get paid the 22%. But it's the guy that goes and looks and validates and gets us millions of dollars that we're entitled to, because you're not going to send a janitor to do it. You're going to send the person, based on the qualification and their expertise, to go and get it. And I understand when my colleagues would talk about, there's a, there's a difference between a, a janitor or custodian and administrator. Look at the job description, por favor. You pay them for what they're supposed to do. You're not going to hire a custodian to do an administrator's job. You hire an administrator to manage and administer the programs they're required to do. And with that, unless you wanted to respond, Mr. Burn, otherwise, I really have nothing else to say. I support the general pay plan, it's across the board, I believe it's fair, and if I'm going to look at the Chamber of Commerce, which I've looked at many of their response, it's only as good as when we know where it came from, and what was the basis, and I don't know where it came from, other than it's here.
Yes, Senator, of necessity, you know, running a government is a complex business and requires everybody to contribute. Many of these people in the general pay plan, like I said yesterday, are needed, they're, they're part of the whole system to make the whole government work and support some of these frontline workers that we talked about yesterday in law enforcement-- of these frontline workers that we talked about yesterday in law enforcement and, and nursing. Everybody's critical to this, whether, whatever job they're doing. You know, a, a person like Shane has a complex job managing all these priorities, managing a complex system and, and a major department. We're responsible for like 30 line agencies, and we're responsible for like $3 billion of cash moving through, through, through DOA. The, these aren't trivial. These are seriously demanding jobs, and people deserve to be paid for the effort they put in to support this government who support the people.
Thank you. Would, would you say then, at also the same token, you know, GovGOM, when you reach 36 years, you pretty much top off at 80% or whatever the rate is? Would you say that that also impacts where you're at in pay? That the 22 would take you to the 80 or 100,000? And then maybe we need to take a look at how many years you can stay in GovGOM? Because right now in GovGOM, on the retirement system, you can stay until you're 100 years old. Maybe you can comment to that, that that also contributes to the, the pay going up higher?
I, I think I'd have to take a, a deeper look to that before I comment on that.
The reason why I say this is because I know for a fact, there's people in GovGOM that are over 36 years. They're already at the 70, 80,000. If we take them off, they're not going to get an increase, they're not going to get any retirement benefits when they do retire. If there's no 22%, they rock bottom. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. Senator Siniklis.
I just want to say for the record, I don't want to stay in government for 100 years. Good afternoon, Mr. Byrne, and sir, thank you for coming again to entertain us and to, I, I support the, the general pay plan. I, I, I think I might have missed it, but I think the study did indicate that there was a higher rate of, that, that, that was recommended, but is 22% the compromise?
Thank you, Senator, for supporting us. Compromise is a word that sometimes has difficult connotations. I think it was a reasonable result based upon the raw data that we, that, that we were looking at. We had to refine that raw data, so maybe a refined result would be a happier way of describing it.
Oh, okay. So, so 22% is taken into account the, our, our condition in the government and, and maybe looking forward and if we're able to sustain this 22%?
Yes, and much as I, I would enjoy the look on some of your colleagues' faces if I'd come here and said, "We need to pay 45%," I, I don't think that was going to work.
Yes, sir, okay, thank you. You know, it's, it's, it's very important that, I, I mean, I, thank goodness I was conscious and paying attention to, you know, when, when I was growing up to, to government, I remember the 5440, and I remember all the other raises, and I remember political promises to give raises, and then we end up, you know, having to figure out and our way out of a crisis. And I don't want to do that anymore. I, 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 I want to make sure that whatever we're doing is going to be appropriate and sustainable for, for the next generation, the people that's going to have to take over after we leave. And so, again, we can do this, right? 22%?
Yes, sir.
All right, so the, the Ms. Jan down at Southern High, who's a parapro, uh, she's, she's going to get her 22%, right?
If she's on the list, she'll get it.
And, and the, and the nice folks at Customs?
The nice folks at Customs will get it.
And, and, and the mayor's counsel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for coming. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Siniklis. And lastly, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the, for the panel, for, for being here today. Mr. Byrne, and, and you, you know, served at this position for, for many years, and through the years, you've, 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 you know, gained, you know, a lot of insight, a lot of knowledge, and a lot of expertise. And despite the number of times we were confrontational, I appreciate the conversations and the candor, as well as the truthfulness, and I appreciate it, okay? So in your, your assessment, could this scenario have occurred in 2019? The request for, I mean, 22% pay raise, pay increase of any kind in 2019?
Well, Senator, as you say, in 2019, is when I, was it 2019? I'd been, I think, at Department of Administration like 18 months. So I didn't have that experience that you so kindly referred to. Could it have happened in 2019? I don't, I, I guess my response would be this, right? If we're uncertain about the future revenues and the future economy now, I think it was even more uncertain in 2019, which was effectively the first surplus that was reported. So it was possible, but much less likely. I've, I think we all feel much more comfortable now.
Okay. And could you, basically, over the last three years, is it very safe to say that a lot of the, a lot of what we've gained in the economy was a lot from activity, revenue activity that was inorganic to Guam? In other words, it's unusual, pandemic assistance, federal assistance, aid in the form close to $4 billion. Could that have greatly contributed to where we're at today?
As I said before, Senator, the federal assistance that was given to Guam, given to other states also, was designed to stimulate economies when they appeared to be in peril because of a, a global pandemic.
Okay.
It, the, the monies that, that came in did that. They stimulated the economy. We were lucky enough, right, to, during that period, to entertain a lot, a growing number of military visitors. You recall, we had military ships, including, I believe, the Queen Elizabeth II visiting Guam, and they spent money here that I probably, they wouldn't have done had the pandemic not occurred, but they did. And, and global conditions have changed. So, yes, there was a contribution for federal funds, but I would certainly be comfortable saying that the stimulus that this, these funds were designed to produce has stimulated the economy, and that's why we're feeling much more comfortable about the prospects now.
Yeah. So thank you. Thank you for the stimulus. Thank you for us being able to get it. You know, I listened very intently. Couple of questions. First off, let's, let me go back to the issue with regard to the, to the merit bonus. Do you know roughly how many employees and former employees and retirees that we have that have not received their, their merit bonus?
There's at least, because some of them received multiple, multiple bonuses throughout the years, I want to say there's at least 800.
So 800, enough. Like 800 people, how many of them fit in the FY12 to FY17 category? And I mean, just, well, how many of them fit in that category that, according to you, this governor has got no, feels there's no obligation to be able to, to pay? How many of those 800 employees are though?
Sorry, Senator, I was looking at a whole number for the whole period from 12 to current. I'd, I'd have, I'd have to split it up like that.
Okay, and I, I, I would truly appreciate that information before we vote on this, okay? Before we even decide where this is going. Mr. Byrne, you, you've mentioned that with regard to the annual increments. Okay, let's talk about annual increments. Are we up to date with our annual increments?
Not really sure what you're asking.
Well, those individuals that, you know, are, as a result of satisfactory to outstanding performances, and they got their evaluation, and they're entitled to their increment.
If we have the, if you're, if you're referring to the employees who are under the purview of DOA, if we have the paperwork with us, then they will have been paid.
Okay, that's an easy way of saying you don't know the information because agencies have not submitted their paperwork to you. You can only answer to what DOA has.
I can only answer to what, what we know.
Okay, so what is it that you do know?
As I do, as I said earlier, we do have a system, HR has a system for monitoring these performance evaluations that give rise to the annual increment, and agencies are informed if they're delinquent.
Okay, so we don't know what that number is. Is that what we're saying?
I don't know what the number is.
Okay. I, I, I appreciate that. Wouldn't it be also prudent, you know, that if an individual was going to get a 22% pay increase, that he would be able to get it at the rate and at that, at that scale? Had his increments been in place, that he would, it would be better to get it at that rate than at the rate that he's currently getting?
Yes, no one would advocate for an out of date...
Something else that we need to think about and, and discuss and, and work on before we, we pass this, this bill. Anyways, so, and, you know, I'm, I'm going to skip down to this one. You mentioned earlier that when we were discussing with regard to how much this more this is going to cost and as far as the benefits, that it was already embedded into the 2024 budget, you know, on the very assumption that this was going to pass. So have you already embedded it in there?
That is our hope and recommendation.
Okay. I'm, I'm, you know, I, okay. Well, let me ask you something else, too. Have you embedded what you anticipate and how you're going to use the compact impact funds you, you anticipate to receive into the budget?
Well, the compact impact funds are federal funds.
Right.
So they're not in, in the budget as submitted.
But have you considered it in the budget?
Have we considered it?
Yeah.
Overall, yes.
Yeah, okay. So there could be a possibility somewhere, if the Biden administration holds true with what it intends to do, that we'll probably be anywhere between $16 to $18 million short already.
I think it's about $6 million, Senator.
All right, I, I think it's more than that, because if you can't count all the, the other programs that it's associated with compact impact. I'm very familiar with compact impact, trust me.
Well, thank you, but I believe it's $6 million.
Okay. You know, I, I, I've got, I've got a ton of other questions, and I'm going to use what I have in as far as my remaining time, Madam Chair, to now propose, I mean, a, a motion for a, another round. There's a lot of questions that, that we have. So promote a, a motion for not just the third round, a fourth round, actually. And this next round, actually, for all of my colleagues, is, is not limited to five minutes to 10 minutes per round. Okay, so that's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor to add another round to questions for the panel for 10 minutes per senator. There have been objections made. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion fails. Senator Blas, you still have 15 seconds.
I'm done.
Thank you very much. That completes our second round of questions for the panel. I'd like to thank Mr. Byrne and Mr. Nata for being here this morning, or this afternoon. If you'd like to make any closing remarks?
Thank you, senators, for listening to us. In, in my view, this is one of the most important reasons that I've ever had to sit in this seat. So thank you so much for your attention. Thank you for your questions. Some of the questions that, that you've been asking require responses, and we will make sure you, you get those responses. But we do appreciate, and I know those employees who will benefit from, from this bill, should you pass it, will, will be very grateful for the consideration that you've given them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Byrne.
Point of inquiry, Madam Chair, sorry.
Please state your point of inquiry, Senator Barnett.
Mr. Byrne, just, you know, I think it would behoove you to, if you would willingly stay for another round, just so that we can flesh out more information, which I think will lead to more support. I feel like some of our colleagues are still on the fence, getting kakano about this. So again, I just, you know, for, for the sake of the support of this bill, and, you know, I mean, it's very passage, I would just ask if you would willingly stay for another round of questions. Thank you, ma'am.
Senator Barnett, you are out of order since the motion to add another round has failed.
Can I ask to reconsider the motion?
Okay, there's been a, a request to reconsider the motion. There, there is an objection, there have been objections. All those in favor of reconsidering the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes. Please state the motion.
Yes, ma'am, I would make a motion that we do an additional, two rounds of questions, but I'm going to go for five minutes for each senator for, for two rounds.
Two rounds in addition to the last round of comments and amendments?
Two rounds, yeah. Objection.
There have been objections made. Are you restating your amendment, amending your amendment?
Yeah, I would like to make two rounds of questions. First round, 10 minutes, second round, five minutes for each senator, please.
Okay, there...
I mean, I would just, you know, impress upon my colleagues that this is a huge consideration, and I think, I don't see the harm in us being able to ask more questions to flesh out more details, because I, I don't believe that many of us have enough information to, to make an informed decision about this proposal, ma'am.
Okay, there has been a motion to add an additional two rounds at 10 minutes per round, 10 minutes for the first round and five minutes for the second round. Okay, there is a, an objection in the back?
Madam Chair, I made a motion to divide the proposal. I'm withdrawing that.
Okay, thank you very much. So we still have a round, a third, just to clarify for everyone, there is another round for comments and amendments. So this is an amendment, or this is a motion to add two additional rounds before the final round.
Yes, ma'am.
Four questions. That will be the third round for 10 minutes, a fourth round for five minutes, and to conclude with our fifth round for comments and amendments. All those in favor of adding the additional round, two rounds. Senator Sinagastin?
Madam Chair, if, if, if it was for two more rounds, then it should be just one if it's 10 minutes, not two, not 10 and five. It's as if we didn't do two rounds already. And if anything, if you was to ask for two rounds of five minutes, that's kind of, that's acceptable and tolerable, but...
Are you making an amendment to the motion, sir?
Yes.
Okay, there's been an amendment proposed to allow for two round, two more rounds of questions at five minutes per round. Are there any objections? No objections, all those in, no objections, motion carries. So on the amend, on the motion as amended, to allow for two additional rounds at five minutes per round, are there any objections? Hearing that, motion carries. We are now, we will take a brief recess.
Okay, so ma'am, just for, just for a point of clarity, so we're going to have two additional rounds at five minutes per senator?
That's correct. We have two rounds coming up, five minutes per round for questions for the panel. I'm sorry you gave your closing remarks already, but you're going to have to do that again. And we will take a brief recess now before this next round of questions. And we will take a brief recess now before this next round of questions.